Crime started to drop this past summer, thanks to various city efforts, including doubling the number of elite metro officers to high-crime areas, and the placement of domestic abuse response teams at every police station.
In other words, about a 15% reduction in crime in those last six months of that increase. To me, that gives me a lot of hope of the work that was done.
The mayor and the chief are stopping short of blaming those increases on Prop 47 and prison realignment, which placed much of the state's prison population back on our streets. However, the mayor and the chief do hope that the increased money savings from those reduced incarcerations will help fund more drug treatment and rehabilitation programs to hopefully prevent the formerly incarcerated from committing more crimes. Yana?
All 21 LAPD stations reported crime increases. The biggest spikes were in the Central Division, which serves downtown and Skid Row. While struggling homeowners continue to remain targets for loan modification scams, Rasha Goel has more on how the city attorney is helping residents from becoming victims.
It is particularly despicable to me that scammers would take advantage of someone who is that vulnerable at that stage in their lives and at that point in their economic life.
L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuer is aggressively working to help homeowners from falling victim to modification scams through a new public awareness campaign.
The first of which is this outreach effort to prevent anyone further from ever being victimized by a loan modification scam. But there's another piece, too. We are going to, in the city attorney's office, hold accountable those who would prey on the fears of homeowners and take advantage of them through loan modification scams.
In 2015, more than 2,000 homeowners in Los Angeles were in default. The city has partnered with the Department of Business Oversight that is helping provide funds for public meetings and additional outreach.
Our program's mission is to support homeownership and inform mortgage borrowers of their rights.
Some tips recommended by the city attorney to avoid loan modification scams are to not pay any upfront fees for services, also not to make any payments to any individuals other than your lender or loan servicer, and to never transfer title to those promising loan modification. Officials are taking a tough stand. Criminal charges have already been filed against two L.A. defendants alleging these scams. Officials say prevention starts with educating homeowners. A symposium will be held on January 30th. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week. For more information on upcoming symposiums, visit lacityattorney.org. While new numbers are in following recently enacted tax breaks for local film and TV production, Gil Reyes has those numbers from downtown.
Filming continues in downtown's Alvera Street for a feature entitled "Live by Night", starring and directed by Ben Affleck. For Affleck and his fellow filmmakers, it's good to be back in L.A.
Most of us in this industry know that Los Angeles, there is really no finer place to make a film than in this city. It boasts the best crews and cast available, the sound stages, the backlots, the equipment houses.
And starting last year, perhaps the best tax breaks for film and TV production. After years of runaway productions to other cities and states, location shoots in Los Angeles increased by 1.3% in 2015. Overall, television production had the biggest increase at 10%. Feature films did not fare as well. Officials are quick to point out that film production here in Los Angeles dropped slightly from the previous year. Then again, those film tax credits didn't go into effect until the fourth quarter.
And in that quarter, we saw a 12% increase in feature filming here in Los Angeles, demonstrating that this tax credit works.
The state has set aside $330 million in tax credits for productions in California to lure companies to L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti has called on every city department to appoint a film liaison to help the industry better access city buildings and other resources. At this news conference outside Pico House, the mayor reacted to the latest Hollywood controversy: A-list stars planning to boycott the Oscars because of the lack of diversity on the list of nominees in the acting categories.
Look, I agree with the criticism. I think Los Angeles reflects the way that the country will be, and it is a reflection of the way the world is today. Our diversity is our strength. Our diversity is part of what makes the cultural mix so interesting here.
The mayor says he'll push for more opportunities for minorities in the industry. Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
In the first year of the tax credits, TV dramas and sitcoms filmed in Los Angeles posted the most gains. While the Board of Water and Power Commissioners OK a proposed LEDWP rate hike, the L.A. City Council cracks down on medical marijuana dispensaries and new safety improvements at Echo Park Lake. All these stories and more in City B. The average single-family household could see electricity go up a total of $12 over five years under an electricity rate hike proposal approved by the Los Angeles City Board of Water and Power Commissioners, which oversees the LEDWP. Board officials say the majority of the rate hike revenue would go toward complying with state mandates to switch to renewable energy sources. The rest would go toward fixing the city's aging and broken electricity infrastructure, which would reduce and prevent blackouts. The rate hike plan has the backing of Mayor Eric Garcetti. The proposal now goes before the L.A. City Council for approval. The city will stop issuing new business tax certificates to medical marijuana dispensaries under an ordinance approved by L.A. City Council. Despite the 2013 voter approval of Proposition D, which banned most medical marijuana businesses in Los Angeles, city finance officials have continued to issue tax certificates and collect taxes from them, illegal or not. Some medical pot shops in the city are still allowed to operate due to exceptions in Proposition D. It's now up to city attorneys to determine whether they are in compliance. City leaders said collecting taxes while also banning medical marijuana businesses sends a mixed message, prompting them to simply cut off the issuance of any new tax registrations. The mayor must sign off on the ordinance before it can go into effect. Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell flipped the switch on a new traffic light at Echo Park. O'Farrell was joined by the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, local residents, and business owners to dedicate the newly-installed traffic signal and pedestrian crosswalk at the busy intersection of Laguna and Echo Park avenues, directly across the street from Echo Park Lake. O'Farrell says the improvements have been a long time coming.
For years, I would see mothers with strollers having to hop the curb and then take their chances just to get to the other side of the street, and so now it's much more safe.
At 167 years old, downtown's Pershing Square Park is due for another facelift. As Gil Reyes reports, competition for the winning bid is down to the final four.
The city of L.A.'s oldest park will soon go from drab to fab.
Pershing Square is a child of its own time, and it needs a revamp. So it's great that the people that are actually going to be using it can have a say in how it's going to be used.
Through public exhibits and online comments, Angelenos have spent months helping to pick the four finalists in the Pershing Square redesign contest. The competition began in September with 54 firms, each with their own vision to recreate a park that suffered from a lack of green space ever since L.A.'s automobile boom of the 1950s. This led to construction of an underground parking garage that added more concrete to the park and removed much of the vegetation. Finalists now plan on doing just the opposite, removing much of the cement and adding more plants.
These designs were created by nationally, internationally-recognized firms, and basically, we're asking the community to provide us feedback and comments.
The differences are in the details. One firm prioritizes walkability, stormwater collection, and eco-friendliness. Another focuses on outdoor theater and a Feng Shui-like connection to the rest of downtown. A third company pitches a variety of outdoor gardens for kids, crops, and nature lovers, while a fourth stresses cultural events, exercise classes, and coffee shops. Whoever wins, most would probably agree anything's better than this. Final presentations are expected in March. A winner to be announced soon after that. In Pershing Square, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
You can pick your favorite design and offer input at pershingsquarerenew.com. While in downtown L.A., green is good. One growing community is making sure the greenery keeps up with the growing concrete. Anna Marcos has more on the new Hope Street Parklet.
Who says urban traffic and park greenery don't mix? The idea of so-called "parklets" in the middle of downtown L.A.'s hustle and bustle is taking hold in South Park, one of the fastest-growing areas downtown.
The South Park population is expected to triple in a mere two years.
The Hope Street Parklet was built under the Department of Transportation's People's Street Program.
A few years ago, the city would say no to these types of projects. The city would say, hey, you know, that the street is a place for cars. It's not a place for people to relax and drink some coffee and talk to one another. But that has changed.
The parklets do require wider sidewalks, which means taking up some street real estate. But most here agree they are good for people and good for business.
It's gonna allow people to really just kind of take in downtown, enjoy downtown.
I hope I'm speaking for most small-business owners that any new public space, any green changes, anything we can help with, we'd love to be involved with.
This is also about investing in places to build and grow community happiness. This is about giving people a place to sit, to rest, to talk, to flirt, to debate.
The price tag for one of these little parklets, anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000. Sometimes, it's a councilmember's office who sponsors it, but often, it's the businesses around who get together to design, create, and pay for it.
Any community who wants one can go to the Department of Transportation under the People's Street Program, get some support, get some ideas of what can be done.
The Hope Street Parklet is one of seven being built under the People's Street Program. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
For more information, call the city's Department of Transportation People's Street Program by dialing City Hall at 311. Grown-ups visit their old playing field and discover it's changed a lot since they were kids. As Gil Reyes reports, there's much more to do at Daniel's Field in San Pedro.
This is actually the first batting cage we've had here in San Pedro, so again, elevating our commitment to our youth. Batting is a switch hitter. San Pedro Councilman Joe Buscagino takes practice swings at this park's new batting cage. Daniel's Field, his park since childhood, has also just added a golf driving range cage and an extended sports complex for basketball, footsaw, and volleyball. For those who grew up playing baseball here, it's a chance to revisit childhood, but with many more options.
Whether it was caroms, or watch baseball games, or football in the old midtown Little League fields, we used to play all the time here, so it's nice to be able to come back. I brought my son with me as well.
The Boys and Girls Club partnered with the city to complete renovations in 18 months. The Boys and Girls Club has hosted all kinds of youth programs here for half a century. Music lessons and the after-school tutoring program known as College Bound has helped boost high school graduation rates for area students.
Generations have come here and achieved their potential when otherwise they might have been left to go home alone after schools.
We are so thankful and appreciative of the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club that for 50 years, they've been here. And expected to be here for many more years with more ways to play. In San Pedro, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Daniel's Field Sports Complex serves some 700 young people from L.A.'s South Bay. Well, do you and your family have a plan if an earthquake or another emergency strikes? Officials say it doesn't take much to keep your family and neighborhood safe.
Thank you very much.
Norma Martin is picking up her emergency disaster kit containing water, a flashlight, goggles, medical pack, and other items.
We have to be knowledgeable of the things that we need to do.
She's one of the hundreds of Angelenos who came out for the 8th Annual Valley Disaster Preparedness Fair, held recently in Granada Hills. Put on by the Southern California Preparedness Foundation and supported by Councilmember Mitch Englander, the fair featured various safety demonstrations, activities, and a host of displays and city department exhibits. The goal was to educate Angelenos on how they can become self-sufficient in the aftermath of a disaster. Officials say it doesn't take much to prepare.
I bought a 10-foot extension cord for $10, or a 100-foot extension cord, and I plug into my neighbor, and then I unplug by morning. See, so I saved a lot of money. But I was very efficient in being able to run my television and my refrigerator.
Officials say invite your neighbors over for coffee and take a few moments to casually talk to them about ways you can help get your neighborhood prepared.
Make it fun, then. Think outside of the box. Come up with something new and innovative and different.
Officials offer some tips to prepare. They recommend having at least three days of water per person on hand and take the time to make a backpack of your important documents and keep a copy in the cloud or your emergency bag. Also in the bag, some cash in small denominations.
And I think that being prepared goes beyond just having water and food. It's an understanding, really, of what it takes in order to survive.
And in order to survive, officials say the first step is to at least start thinking and talking about getting prepared so that you can not only help yourself, but you can help others, too.
Captain comes by, and the engine company, or the truck company, or the rescue, whatever it is, and you look at them, and you say, "We've got it. Go to the next neighborhood." That's where the value comes.
For more information on things you can do to get prepared, visit socalprep.us. High school students getting paid to spruce up their neighborhoods. Gil Reyes has more on some job openings with the L.A. Conservation Corps. Gil?
Yeah, Yana, what a great opportunity for young people who may feel like there are few options out there. What you see out here is paid training, and the sky's the limit in terms of the future. Alexis Tavares is well on his way to mastering some skills.
Irrigation, I've learned how to form. I learned how to finish concrete. Obviously, I'm not an expert on it, but I have help with it.
While still in high school, Tavares had answered an ad to join a training program with the L.A. Conservation Corps and began working within three months.
Corps members are planting trees, building gardens, building playgrounds and parks. They're cleaning streets, removing graffiti, recycling. Corps members initially earn a minimum wage with us during the training program, and then if they are interested in staying with us as a supervisor or moving into a higher-level staff position, obviously, the pay increases.
Up to $40,000 a year for supervisors. For the past 30 years, the city of L.A. has called the Corps first to mop up major messes. Winter storm cleanup: Call the Corps. Habitat restoration: Call the Corps. Trash removal after a Lakers parade: The city knows who to call. Work is non-union, but employees have the option of leaving after the training program for higher-paying union jobs elsewhere. And yes, the Corps will hook them up with employers.
Jobs in the energy field, in construction, in manufacturing, and especially clean tech manufacturing. Lots of things that Corps members can do if they like to use their hands.
Yes, it has been worth it so far because I have learned so much.
Learning on the job and building options for the future. In Pico Union, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Young people ages 14 to 24 can apply. The Corps also offers college scholarships for those who qualify. Find out more at lacor.org. While a night on Broadway shines the spotlight on some historic theaters in downtown L.A., enjoy some of the city's most popular museums for free, and fine art comes alive at the L.A. Convention Center. That's all in this week's Things to Do. Night on Broadway is back. It's the 8th anniversary of the Los Angeles City Councilmember Jose Huizar's Bringing Back Broadway Initiative, a 10-year plan for the revitalization of the historic Broadway corridor. This free one-night extravaganza in downtown Los Angeles will feature programming on the historic stages of glorious theaters often close to the public, as well as a large street festival with an outdoor stage of its own. Internationally-renowned artists, acrobats, performers, musicians, and other acts will fill the storied Broadway corridor with art, entertainment, food, and music, with a special focus on Broadway as the heart of downtown Los Angeles. The event takes place on Saturday, January 30th, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in downtown L.A. For more, visit nightonbroadway.la. Clear your calendar for museums free-for-all Saturday on January 30th, when more than two dozen museums in the L.A. area will offer free admission, not including specially-ticketed exhibitions or parking, allowing local residents an amazing opportunity to check out the culture of their city free of charge. You can see anything from art to natural history and science. Participants for this year include many locations that are not normally free, such as the Natural History Museum, Lacma, Mocha, and the Descanso Gardens, along with museums that regularly offer free admission, such as both Getty Campuses and the Broad. For more, visit socalmuseums.org. If you're an art enthusiast, get your fill at the Los Angeles Fine Art Show. It'll feature a rich blend of premier historic and contemporary art. Unique in the art fair world, dealers from around the globe will converge at the Los Angeles Convention Center to share their exceptional variety of fine and decorative art, spanning all styles and centuries with serious collectors, interior designers, and museum curators. 20 years ago, the Los Angeles Fine Art Show was created as a regional show, reflecting the city's evolving nature. Today, it continues that tradition, offering an extraordinary range of genres from 18th-century European paintings to contemporary realism. This year, the Los Angeles Fine Art Show is dedicated solely to historic and contemporary art. Check it out at the L.A. Convention Center, January 27th through the 31st. For more, visit losangelasfineartshow.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week. this week.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel. Namaste.
Good morning, sergeants. Can you please call the members who've not...
Good morning. Today is Friday, January 28th, and I'm Nury Martinez, and this is the Los Angeles City Council. This meeting meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 o'clock. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Blumenthal, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Herrstassen, Weiser, Coetz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present. Anna Quormes, Madam President.
What's our first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Bonin moves. Mr. Buscaino second, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Rue moves, and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Madam President, there are requests to continue 1P and 1W for two weeks to February 12th, 2016, and 1Y for 30 days to February 26th, 2016. Further, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed: Items 1A, C, and M, as the liens have been paid in full, and that the lien amounts be reduced on Item 1L to $592.54, and Item 1AA to $442.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order, next.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Madam Clerk, do we have any cards on Item 1?
Yes, there are cards on 1.
Members, are there any specials? See none? On the remaining items, let's open the roll. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten i's, eleven i's, I'm sorry.
Okay, next item.
Items 2 through 6 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are before us. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards on those items?
There are cards on Items 2, 4, and 5.
Members, any specials? See none? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven i's.
What's next?
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Let's begin with our presentations this morning. Mr. Krikorian, are you ready, sir?
Good morning, members. I'm very pleased to be able to be here and introduce you to the North Hollywood Cinefest, one of the great film festivals that we have in the Second Council District centered in the NoHo Arts District. I'm joined today by Gustavo Sampaio, the founder of the North Hollywood Cinefest. Gustavo is an award-winning editor for KCBSTV in Los Angeles and has also worked on Entertainment Tonight and The Insider, but his real passion was bringing this film festival to North Hollywood, and it has been such a great contribution to the artistic vibrancy of the North Hollywood Arts District, and we're so pleased to have the festival here. And it would be reason enough to recognize the Cinefest just because of their contributions to the Arts District. But I really wanted to bring Gustavo here because of the heart that this festival has shown. Last year, there was a documentary that was submitted as one of the applicants, and it was one of the contestants in the film festival. It was a documentary called Someone You Love: The HPV Epidemic, and it was narrated by Vanessa Williams. And this was a documentary about the crisis of HPV infection and the resulting cervical cancer that takes so many women from us throughout the country. Each year, some 12,000 women will be diagnosed with cervical cancer, and about 4,000 of them will die from that disease. And in so many of those cases, that cancer resulted from HPV infection, which could easily have been prevented if that woman, either as a girl or even as an adult, had received the immunization to prevent transmission of that deadly virus. And unfortunately, far too often, we see resistance to that immunization process. We see politically-inspired resistance to it, and it's a shame, because it is costing women's lives. So when Gustavo saw this and realized that this documentary could be such a powerful way of communicating that message, he was so inspired by it that he devoted a portion of the proceeds of last year's Cinefest to HPV prevention and cervical cancer and breast cancer awareness and prevention. So a portion of all the ticket sales were donated to the California Health Collaborative and Every Woman Counts, a statewide program that provides free cervical and breast cancer screenings. So I'm really very pleased and honored to be able to introduce you to Gustavo and to remind you that Cinefest is coming back to North Hollywood in March, March 14th?
Eighteenth.
March 18th. So you're all invited to the NoHo Arts District to come on down and enjoy the great films and the great heart of the North Hollywood Cinefest. So allow me to introduce you, please, to Gustavo Sampaio. Gustavo?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, and I just would like to reiterate that, yes, we are about promoting great independent film, but the power of film is really what inspires me to be a part of the community and seek out different ways to help in any way that we can as an organization. And so this was a very obvious opportunity and a very wonderful opportunity. The film was a very powerful one, and it did very well. It's actually touring the country. Shortly after we had played it, it started touring the country in many places, so we're very proud to have been a part of that and very honored by the recognition from the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gustavo. So on behalf of the City Council, Gustavo, I'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition, signed by all members of the City Council, and wish you the best on this year's North Hollywood Cinefest. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Our next presentation, Mr. Sadio.
Rise and shine, everybody. I have a great privilege and a great honor to acknowledge one of the great leaders of our city, a man I've gotten to know as I've come back in our efforts to clean up the city with our campaign called Keep It Clean. I've learned of this great leader who really is an inspiration, who is prepared and who has brought his talent to help serve the city, none other than Enrique Zaldivar. Enrique is from Zacatecas, the home state of our colleague. Came north to A.S.U.S.A. and attended A.S.U.S.A. High School, UCLA, the greatest public institution in America, and then attended a very prominent and significant Cal Poly Pomona where he became trained as an engineer and started his career with the city in 1985. He's been with us since 1985. Twenty-two years later, he became the general manager of L.A. Sanitation, which is referred to as AlSan, and has been a great leader and at the helm of an agency with over 300 employees and a budget of $1.1 billion. Through his leadership, he manages a whole range of programs: the city's Clean Water Program, our Solid Resource Program, and our Watership Protection Program. He is a consummate leader. He's a person who takes our ideas and implements them and makes them a reality, and he is the person who makes sure that we have the clean environment that this city deserves and that every resident of the city deserves. And so I'm very happy to be here this morning to recognize his 30 years of service. Now, I want to be very clear. He is not here to retire. This is just an acknowledgement of service. I don't want to wait for retirement. I want to acknowledge 30 years is a significant time, and it should be acknowledged, but he is not retiring at this moment, and I don't anticipate any early retirement. And so, everybody relax. That's it. With that, let me introduce our great general manager of the Department of AlSan, Enrique Zaldivar, with his family.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio. Thank you in particular for setting the record clear in that I am not retiring, because that's really more good news for myself, right? But, you know, I am sporting this particular pin, service pin, on my lapel, should still be on here, and probably other than myself, the only other person in this chamber who would know what that means would be Avak. It's a 30-year service pin. It's a two-diamond pin, and, you know, I had never thought much about it until now that I have hit this milestone. It's a great, significant milestone. So I want to thank Councilmember Sadio for picking up on the fact that, you know, it has been 30 years of a great, rewarding career so far, but, you know, it's a commemoration of service to this great city. My career began in 1985, straight out of Cal Poly Pomona, after I had had a short stint at UCLA, but there's nothing special about this year, 1985, other than the fact that it was four years after Fernando Valenzuela came onto the Dodgers. And yes, I was suckered into the Fernando mania of the time, and so I know what's going to happen a little later. So thank you for adding that additional flavor to this special commemoration for me, Councilmember Sadio. It's been a very rewarding and fulfilling career so far. I started, and of course, you know, as the course of life goes, soon after I started my career here, in parallel on my personal life, I met and soon married my wonderful wife, Brenda Zaldivar, who is here with me today. Brenda Zaldivar. And we have been blessed with three wonderful kids. I should always introduce her first, because she will not ever forgive me. My daughter, Karina Zaldivar, Karina Gabriela Zaldivar, and to my right is Alonso Zaldivar, and not with us today is our older son, Enrique Junior, who is a fellow quarterback, former quarterback like Councilmember Sadio, football, but he is at Arizona State in Arizona trying to overturn SB 1096. So he's been busy. It has been a blessing to be part of the city family. An incredible honor to be the general manager of L.A. Sanitation and represent the nearly 3,000 employees of the department, whose commitment to protect public health and the environment is unequal and unparalleled. I want to thank every one of them. With us today are many of my coworkers, my employees, many of them on the management team, many of them I have worked with and worked alongside for most of my career. So I want to thank each and every one of you who came from Sanitation. I want to thank our labor partners. Of course, in a place like Sanitation with 3,000 employees, we cannot, I cannot be successful without the cooperation, collaboration, and partnership of our labor partners. So I want to thank them. I know some of them are here as well. I, of course, want to thank my boss, Mayor Garcetti, who entrusted in me the privilege to lead this great department. I want to thank my commissioners, the Board of Public Works. They have their own meeting going on right now, so unfortunately, they could not join me here today. I know they would have... I know they would have liked to have joined me. Some are here.
Mr. Zaldivar?
Yes.
We do have a commissioner in the back, Ms. Heather Republino.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you for joining us. And my other boss, Deputy Mayor Barbara Romero, who's up there in the days, thank you very much, Barbara, for your trust and your support. Particularly, I want to thank Councilmember Sadio. We have developed this incredible relationship since he came on the City Council around the cleanliness and the livability of the city. I want to thank you, Councilmember Sadio, for your incredible leadership and your great friendship. Thank you so very much. And I cannot also, in anticipation of the Dodgers coming here, I want you to know that I have been Dodger Blue since I came to this country and will stay forever Dodger Blue, contrary to the fact that my daughter has gone red with the Angels. But not for long. Her brothers won't let her go on any longer that way. So, thank you so very much, Councilmembers. It's been a great pleasure to work with you and to work for your staff. The "for" is for your staff. The "with," to work with you, is for you. You know what I mean. I work for your staff. So, thank you, thank you so very much, all of you.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio, we have two members on the queue. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Councilmember Sadio, for bringing this recognition forward. I just wanted to stand up as a new member who hasn't been around quite as long as Enrique, and thank you from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the residents of Council District Eight, for your responsiveness and your care and concern for all of the city of Los Angeles. Right when I got elected, a story came out in the L.A. Times, the front page, about lack of responsiveness and buildup of trash in certain parts of the city, and in the mark of true leadership, Enrique was waiting at my desk that morning before I got here and said, "Councilman, what are we going to do about it?" And since that time, he's come to our district and he's told people, "It is my job to deliver the kinds of streets that are befitting the dignity of you and your families." And they have done that in a few short time, in a very short time, they removed over a million pounds of trash from our district in the alleys. And folks, wherever I go in the district, they remark at how much cleaner it's gotten in the last few months. So, again, it would have been easy for you to do some hocus pocus and say there isn't enough money or, you know, it's this intractable reason or another intractable reason, but you got the organization to move, move quickly and make a big difference in people's lives, and that's the best of what it means to be a public servant, and so, we thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Gilbert, for this recognition and for scaring the heck out of me. I actually had a really short meeting in back. I came in and I saw you up here and I said, "Oh, no, how did I not know about this?" But I thank you for your 30 years. I thank you for not retiring. I thank you for being a great partner, especially on key environmental issues in the city, and we hope to have you for another 30 years.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Zaldivar. Our next presentation is from Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Busciano. Are you both ready?
All right, colleagues, thank you, Madam President. It's a great opportunity for us to recognize an incredible nationally-known public safety community partnership program that has taken shape and has really put community policing the forefront of this national debate between the relationships that we have with our community and the Community Safety Partnership Program in partnership with the LAPD and our Housing Authority represented here by Mr. Eric Brown. An incredible program that allows our officers to build relationships with residents of our housing developments and not focus on hooking and booking, but focusing on mentoring, with mentoring our kids, building relationships, helping those with reentry efforts, and it's a program that we're so proud that has been effective. It's been effective because it's lowered violent crime in our developments throughout the city of Los Angeles. And I want to start by saying a heartfelt thank you to these men and women behind us. Give them a round of applause for their commitment to service and their respect for people, one of our LAPD core values that we all embrace here. It's a different breed that we see behind us. Now, we're blessed throughout this city that we have hard-working men and women who serve our city day in and day out and protect our city throughout to ensure that we reduce violent crime and property crime, we reduce the incidence and fear of crime. But these are officers that show their heart behind the badge, day in and day out throughout our developments. Now, today's presentation alongside Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson, thanking Marquis for partnering together on this, was about this idea by Sergeant Tengritis to be in the forefront and lead this effort, to pick the right individuals, the right officers, to build these relationships. And it was Commander Tengritis, who then the commander of, the captain of Southeast Division, now the commander of South Bureau, worked to form this program in partnership with the Housing Authority. Years ago, Commander Tengritis dared to do things differently, and because of that, we're here to celebrate this program that has set a national standard for policing. I remember I was on loan to South Bureau when they were selecting officers to be a part of this community safety partnership program, rather. Then, I don't know, Amada, you were a police officer then? Were you a sergeant?
Sergeant.
Come on front. Look at you on the back. You were a police officer then?
Oh, no.
You were a sergeant. She was in charge of the oral exams to make sure that we have these right officers, and she was so passionate about picking the right people to be a part of the CSP program. And in fact, she got a couple of motion, she got emotional a few times because she was so passionate about it because she wanted to make sure it was the right people, and those behind us today are those right officers who are serving our developments. So, the mission of the program is to foster relationships with the residents of, in my district, Jordan Downs, Nickerson Gardens, Imperial Courts, Ramona Gardens, the Ramona Gardens on the northern end of the city. The ongoing focus is to start and support community and youth programs, address quality life issues, develop programs to address and reduce violent crimes. HBO did a special on the Watts Bears. Officers behind me, most of them, a lot of them were coaching this tackle football group that you had kids from various developments play together on one team, and it was an amazing, amazing victory. Now, I know they're not, they have a losing record, but it's not about having a losing record. It's about working together, and it's an amazing team, and the coaches behind me can attest to that. We also have community members here from our Watts Gang Task Force who continue to embrace this program, embrace our officers, and the CSP program has proven that community collaboration is the most important ingredient in effective policing. And with Phil Tengritis, the commander, he is definitely a peacemaker, as all these officers are, and this is why I'm honored to have Commander Tengritis, Amada, here before us, and they led this effort, and they said it's not about them, they're so humble, it's about these officers that they're here to support as well. So, another reason I'm here to speak and want to recognize Commander Tengritis, he'll be speaking at my upcoming L.A. Crime Forum this Thursday at the Warner Grand in San Pedro. As we know, crime is the single most important issue on the minds of residents that I represent, and it's important that we work as effectively and efficiently as possible to ensure that people feel safe in the city. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Marquis Harris Dawson. Thanks for your partnership and appreciate you leading this effort.
Excellent. Thank you so much, our resident officer, Councilmember Joe Busciano. I'm happy to join in with you in celebrating the Community Safety Partnership. So often, in this town, we wake up in the morning and we read the paper, and it's all about what's wrong with our city. Crimes up, problems with the police department, problems with housing, problems with homelessness. So, this morning, I'm very, very excited to be here to celebrate what works in the city of Los Angeles. There are few things that we are more proud of and that work as well as the Community Safety Partnership. Everybody in this chamber ought to give them a big round of applause for their commitment to the city. In addition to doing patrol, they go to community meetings, they help start little leagues, they work with families over extended periods of time. An axiom that the famous community organizer Fred Ross is famous for saying is, "There are no shortcuts in community work, there are only detours." There's no shortcut to getting to know families, to getting to know communities, to spending time with young people. There is no replacement for it, and the Community Safety Partnership does that, does it in a rigorous way, and it delivers concrete results. And yes, it costs a little more, and we're very grateful for Hackla, but the cost that we pay is much less than what we would pay without programs like Community Safety Partnership. And so, I want to, again, thank them, acknowledge them, and ask all of them to not hesitate to call on any of us if there is anything you need to create the kind of communities that we all deserve to live. And I want to call up the members of the Watts Gang Task Force to say a few words. Come on up. Yes, you're on. This is all about you and your families.
Buenos dias a todos. Pues nosotros estamos aquí, somos de la...
Un momentito, señora. Le vamos a traer la traductora.
Gracias. Ay, señorita, que gusto verla.
That's right.
Dios te bendiga.
Okay, continúe.
Mi nombre es Leti Martínez.
My name is Leti Martínez.
I come from the community of Watts.
Nosotros estamos orgullosos de poder representar nuestra comunidad. We're very proud of being able to represent our community.
Porque ahora gracias al largo trabajo que ha hecho la policía con nosotros.
Because now, thanks to the hard work that the police have done with us.
Trabajando juntos hemos logrado bajar el crimen.
We have worked together and we have been able to reduce the crime.
Porque gracias a ellos hemos logrado hacer que nuestra voz escuche.
Because thanks to them, we have been able to have our voices heard.
Y tengamos una mejor seguridad y tranquilidad para nuestras familias.
So, we can be in a safe environment for us and for our families.
Yo los felicito en general a todos.
Thank you, everyone.
Por su buen trabajo que han hecho con nosotros.
For your great work that you have done with us.
Y porque han dejado en nuestro corazón ese reconocimiento de que podemos contar con ustedes los policías.
And you have left us in our heart that we can count with you, the police department.
Tengo muchas cosas que decir, pero estoy emocionada que quiero llorar.
I have so many things to say, but I'm so emotional right now that I want to start crying.
Pero los felicito a todos, Dios los bendiga, y vamos a seguir trabajando para tener un Watts mejor.
But I thank you, everyone, and we're going to continue working together and we're going to have a better Watts.
Y quitar la mala imagen que tienen de que Watts es malo.
And to take away that really bad image that Watts is a bad place.
Y juntos podemos.
And together we can do it.
Dios los bendiga a todos.
God bless everyone.
Felicidades y continuemos trabajando juntos.
Let's continue working together.
Arriba Watts! Gracias, señora. Mr. Harris Dawson, we have a colleague on the queue.
We have one more speaker.
Do you have one more?
We have one more speaker. We want to invite to speak one of the leaders of the CSP movement here in Los Angeles, our own South Bureau Commander Phil Tengritis. Come on up.
All right, Phil. Good morning, and I really want to thank Councilman Harris Dawson and Councilman Busciano for celebrating the CSP program and its successes, but really, I need to thank them for far more because both have been amazing partners in the work that has been done, to include Councilman Price, who has also been a wonderful partner in Avalon Gardens. But this program is really not about just the officers. This program is about partnership between the community, between Hackla, between government. It is a partnership that has really focused on building relationships, breaking down the barriers that have kept separation between the police and the community, and as a result, the communication has brought peace, has lowered the crime dramatically, and it's because these officers behind me have all looked at policing in a very, very different way, and they have joined the community as partners to work together to make it safe. And that has been a very exhausting process because it takes time and it's very difficult to bring change. And as we have seen a lot of conflict between police and community throughout this country, we didn't see that same conflict in places where we had the Community Safety Partnership. So, thank you all for recognizing it because by recognizing this, we're all acknowledging that it's a way of policing that is working. Thank you. One, I have to, real quick, I, excuse me, I forgot the community because we, this community has been amazing. That's right. And they have joined together and moved away from that conflict, and thank you all for being here from the community. That's right. That's right, Don.
Good morning, everybody. You know, this program they're talking about is pretty huge in our community, and I want to really give it up for the officers. Give it up for them. I grew up in the biggest development. I lived over at Nickerson for 47 years. This type of relationship we never thought would never come, and when this program first came, it wasn't easy, but everybody had big hearts and they knew what they wanted to do. I knew football was took from our community for our young kids for almost 20 years, and when the officers got involved, they wanted to bring a football team back to Watts, and we have the Watts Bears that continue to be strong because some of these officers, how they are dedicated. And Commander Field is not just the commander, he's my brother, and that's how we treat each other. His wife is my sister. We love one another in the community. So, it's pretty huge for Watts. We want to see this grow throughout all the communities. Thank you.
Go ahead, other members.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Councilmembers Busciano and Harris Dawson for bringing this exciting program to our attention. It really demonstrates what strong committed leadership can do, and Commander, you have done an extraordinary job of providing the kind of leadership that everyone is following, and it has been a real partnership between the police and the community in a real unprecedented way, and so, I'm glad that we are pioneering these efforts through our Housing Authority. My only regret, my only regret is that the Housing Authority recently denied an application of this program at the Pueblos, but hopefully, we can turn that around because it's the kind of project I think we should have at all of our housing projects and really underscoring the strong relationship that we want to see develop between the police and the the strong relationship that we want to see develop between the police and the community, wherever that community is. So again, thank you, keep up the good work. Congratulations.
Right on. Thank you.
That's it.
We have amongst us some champions, the Los Angeles Dodgers. But those wearing the badge, the LAPD badge, are the champions in our community, who protect us, they are the angels in the city of angels. I'll never forget a story that Tommy Lasorda shared with me. He was at Shea Stadium in New York, and there was NYPD there welcoming Tommy Lasorda. He approached one of the NYPD officers, he looked at the badge, and Tommy said, "That's the second-best badge in this country. It's the LAPD badge, is... are the finest police officers, the finest police officers who share and wear that badge day in and day out." So let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Marquis, for your partnership on this. God bless you, and God bless LAPD and the community.
Wow. So we're going to go back here and take some photos. Everybody bring your certificates.
Where are you sending them back, that way? And then reaching the house.
Okay. Not to go that way. We're going to go that way.
Our next presentation is from Mr. Weezer. Are you ready, sir?
Everybody's going to rejoin the member in the back?
Thank you, Madam President. And what a great day in the city of L.A. as we continue to honor our heroes and individuals who do great things in this great city. And it gives me great pleasure to welcome into council members of a nonprofit group called Bridge of Health. I would like to start off by commending the founders, Anahit and Robert, for their passion, resolve, and commitment which led to the formation of Bridge of Health. Their type of involvement and giving makes a vital difference in the experience and outcomes of children with cancer. Bridge of Health provides free medical and public health services to the outskirts of the cities in Armenia while emphasizing the general health of children. They have raised funds to go toward funding chemotherapy, radiological imaging, imagining, and blood transfusions for children battling against cancer. They act as liaisons connecting pediatric cancer patients in Armenia with life-saving medical advances and resources available in the United States. And let me tell you, that makes a great difference. It's a matter of life and death in terms of what medical attention children with cancer receive. Most importantly, they have provided many families with the emotional support and financial alleviation of the costly cancer treatments for their children. Bridge of Health has worked tirelessly to bridge the gap in healthcare, giving hopes to children battling cancer. For example, Vajeh, a brave little boy from Gumri, was diagnosed with lymphoblastic leukemia in 2013. The diagnosis was a complete shock to the family. Today, Vajeh is back in his hometown, and with the hardest part of his continuous treatment behind him, he is able to rebuild a childhood thanks to the help of Bridge of Health. Lucine, an eight-year-old girl, seldom without a smile on her face, was diagnosed with cerebral palsy early on. That, however, never stopped her from having an active childhood. In 2014, doctors found that she had lymphoblastic leukemia. After one long year of continuous treatments at Yoldyan Hematology Center in Yerevan, she won her brave battle against cancer. Thank you, Bridge of Health. During the summer of 2015, Bridge of Health rewarded children in Armenia who bravely fought for their lives and completed chemotherapy with meaningful medals with the message, "Winner in the battle of life," engraved on them. Today, we award this amazing nonprofit for bridging the gaps, breaking the barriers, and changing the lives of children. Their efforts will never be forgotten. So at this time, if I could ask Kayane to come up and please share a few words.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having us here. You know, we just want what everybody wants, a better world. And in this world, no child would have to forego the treatment they need because of a lack of resources, especially for something as devastating as cancer. We hope to change the world, one child at a time, to give every child a chance to conquer cancer. But we can't bridge the gap without help. That's why we need to inform the public and bring awareness to this issue. By recognizing our work, actually, you are doing us and these children a great service. So thank you for helping us spread this important message.
Thank you. And now, we were here from Nadek.
Thank you, Councilwoman Weezer. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of members of the Bridge of Health, I would like to first thank all the council members for this generous... for this generous honor. We are very humbled. It was only three years ago when we gathered in our friends' parking lot garage, and we had one vision, uniting us all together. One thing that was very clear is that we had one way to help children suffering cancer in most poverty-stricken areas in Armenia. That was our mission. Today, after many successful fundraising events, we are proud to say that we have made a difference in a child's life. It is an honor, knowing that we are able to provide the opportunity for people in our community to come together in Los Angeles and help children and give a hand for less fortunate areas in the world. We try to stand out from most other organizations by annually going to Armenia ourselves, allocating the funds, whether it's purchasing medical supplies or buying chemotherapy treatments and providing it for the child to save their life. Whatever it is, we try our best, because this cause goes beyond all of us. We strive to give every child the opportunity that we are all given here today, a shelter over our head and good health. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nadek. And we all individually have been impacted by cancer, either our own families or someone we know, and we know how devastating it can be. And the good news is that we had made a lot of advances in the treatment of cancer, but we have much more to do. Leukemia, for example, which strikes young people at a higher rate, 30 years ago it was a death sentence, but now, thankfully, through technology, we are now giving children back their lives. And it is this type of work that is happening here with this organization that is promoting and making this type of technology and medical treatment available to Armenia. And given that we're an international city, we're seeing this throughout the world, where Los Angeles and the connections we have here and people who have relationships with other countries are beginning to support, expand the advancements we made here in the United States in the treatment of cancer. So thank you so much, and thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Kokorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Mr. Weezer for bringing these remarkable young people to us, and I just want to underscore the point a bit, because of course, Yerevan is a sister city of Los Angeles, it's one of the, you know, rising capitals in that part of the world, and, you know, people can live a very good life in Yerevan. But not too far out of Yerevan are some of the most poverty-stricken areas anyone can imagine. And once you get out of the capital to places like Gumri, a city that still is recovering from the devastating earthquake that took the lives of so many, basic health care is a challenge. So the things that we take so for granted here that save the lives of children every day here are simply unavailable to the people in villages and some of the smaller towns in Armenia, like so many other places. And so I just want to recognize, these young people are an example of how a good idea and passion and commitment by a small number of people can really be transformative of lives around the world and is the one thing that really will change our world. So thank you very much all for your commitment, for your passion, and for making a difference in the lives of so many people.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. If I could ask Mr. Kokorian if you could do me the honors and help present this city resolution to Bridge of Health, please. As we present this resolution, thanking Bridge of Health for their wonderful work and to encourage you to keep doing the great work you're doing. On behalf of the city, congratulations, and thank you so much for you doing on behalf of our children.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Turn around. Okay. Now we're going to go in the back and take some photos. That's okay. Got it? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Congratulations. That concludes our presentations this morning, but let's move on to item two, Madam Clerk.
Item two, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, item two, sir.
Go Dodgers, of course. Number two is very important, and we'd like this... this is a... this is REAP. Remember, if your landlord does not keep your apartment up to code, you can complain to the city. If the landlord doesn't repair it, guess what? The landlord doesn't get your rent anymore. The city gets it till the landlord comes here and takes care of business. This is an excellent... again, when you do an excellent job, we're here to thank you on behalf of all renters for this militant program to keep all the units in L.A. up to code. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That concludes Cards on Item Two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item four.
Item four, call special for cards.
Mr. Previn, item four, sir. Followed by Mr. Walsh. Good morning, Mr. Previn.
Good morning, Council President Martinez. It is very exciting to have the Dodgers in the House, and item number four is slightly less exciting. It is from the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences, who, God bless them, have been having a tough time in the media this week because of the dismal diversity numbers. But this is an item where fortunately they are coming forward to pay $300,000 to cover some of the city's services that will be doled out to help with the big celebration that is a bit muted this year because of those pesky details. But that's okay. We are pleased that they are coming up with the 300. Last week, actually, the Grammys came through and they came up with 100. So the question is, why are the Oscars paying an extra 200? Maybe it's a bigger event, not 100% sure. One thing, though, going forward that you can be absolutely sure of is that the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences has been lobbying down here at City Hall. They do so because it's their right to do so, and they engage a group that I think many of you are familiar with, it's called Armbrister, Goldsmith, and Delvac. This is a prestige white shoe firm that do an outstanding job. In Q2 2015, they took, and this is going to... everybody sit down for this one, they took $437,000 of the Academy's money, that's the billions in movie revenue for the agency that is having diversity issues, and they cashed the check. But they followed up in Q13, Q3, rather, with, this is 2015, with another $372,000, so we say Mazel Tov. And finally, in Q4, a more muted, less anybody check, it was about $18,000. So all in, that's a lot of money, but they got their value. And now, I think that part of that money, to be absolutely fair and judicious, is for the big museum that's coming forward. But still, one has to ask, why are we paying a bunch of lobbyists almost $1 million for a museum? So thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Wait, 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 hold a second. The entire, every African-American in the world is saying boycott the Academy Awards for their longstanding racism. But not up here. Not only aren't you going to boycott them, you're going to give them, if this passes O'Farrell and Ru's motion, you're going to give them $300,000 out of the taxpayers' pockets to spend any way they want, maybe beating the shit out of black people who picket the awards ceremony. I cannot believe this. $300,000, I'm reading, for city resources, for, in other words, the cops that are there aren't being paid, are not being paid by the Academy, they're being paid by us to beat the shit out of blacks, Hispanics, and whites who believe that there is racism. I just want the whole world to know that there is no greater racists in America than the mayor of the city who will be there...
Mr. Walsh, I need to speak to the...
...backside on the seat. I'm telling you, $300,000, and you're spitting in the face of every black person in America because of the racist city, racist Dolby Theater, the racist Academy Awards, and you're sponsoring it to the tune of $300,000 out of our pockets, the taxpayer. For shame on all of you, especially the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Just for the record, we're... Oh, Mr. Kokorian, did you want to set the record straight?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Walsh sometimes struggles with facts, so because there's viewers at home watching this, I just wanted to make clear that the city is receiving $300,000, not spending. Small difference, but I thought that we should clarify that for the folks watching at home.
We appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. That concludes Cards on Item Four. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item five.
Item five, call special for cards.
Mr. Previn, item five, sir. Mr. Previn passes on item five. That concludes Cards on Item Five. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item one.
And, Madam President, there are requests to continue for two weeks, one E, one Q, one R, one S, and one U for two weeks to February 12, 2016, and a request to continue one X for 30 days to February 26, 2016.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. I have Cards on Item One. The first speaker is Rebecca Baca. Rebecca Baca, you're speaking on one N. Are you here? I don't see anyone in the audience. This is on one X. Are you Leslie Morris? Are you Leslie Morris, sir?
I'm Leslie Morris, yes.
I just want to inform you that your item's been continued for two weeks.
Pardon?
Thirty days. Your item's been continued for 30 days.
Thirty days? Okay, we can go for 30 days, but I am protesting this leaning on my property because of the fact that I don't think this is a fair deal for us to have to pay for what the tenants don't do. And I tried the city council, and I tried the building department of safety. It's a bad law for Los Angeles, number one. I mean, it's just like going to a car rental, renting a car, and the driver you rent it to gets a ticket, and then the car company has to pay the ticket. So if we have to go through this again, I need to talk to somebody that we can try and get something affirmative to try and get this fine reduced if we have to pay it for the first offense. I don't think we have to pay this fine for first offense. This new inspector comes out, and he pretends that the tenant didn't pay his fine for 2012, and the tenant's been there for 25 years. If he paid the fine for 25 years, how in the world could he miss one year? I don't understand how they can justify a $4,000 fine for a $467 offense. That's my problem right there. So if we want to continue this in 30 days, we can do that. So if we wanna continue this in 30 days, we can do that. Just let me know who I have to talk to. But so far, talking, trying to talk to the councilman, they tell me that somebody else was in the councils of Ninth, the Ninth District at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris, your time is up. Your item's been continued for 30 days, and someone from the department will speak to you in the back. His name is Charles. You can continue to talk about your item in the back. Charles, can you raise your hand, please? Alert this gentleman about where you're at, so he can speak to you. Sir, you can speak to Mr. Charles over by the ropes. Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Dimitri Urbinski. I can't pronounce, I cannot make out your last name, but is there anyone here named Dimitri? You're speaking on item one E? One E? This item's been continued until February 12. Next speaker is Richard Smith. On one Q, Richard Smith, are you here? This item has also been continued until February 12. Mr. Previn, on item one.
Good morning, Council President West. And I will take just 60 seconds on this item because it will not take me much time to underline and appreciate what that gentleman just said, which is, and by the way, what a brave guy to come down here in front of all these Dodgers and all the fans and say what he said, which is absolutely true, that the city needs to do a much better job of what this, these public, these building and safety inspectors are doing. Because in my neighborhood, in CD2, we have one on Beaman Avenue, where they're conducting various sneaky plans to do one thing. They have a parking violation. This guy had something, he was storing a vehicle in his driveway, $5,000. That is one hell of a parking ticket. And, look, people come into compliance with their vegetation. We can send people out and send them a bill. This is way out of control. These are 250% penalties. This is an insult to the public and to the fans to be doing this in our city council meeting, as I've told you, in repetition, Council President. So I would appreciate that if you would change this practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. The next speaker is Reina Revalo. Reina Revalo on item one R. This, this item has also been continued for two weeks. Mr. Walsh, on item one.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. These are liens. These are excellent liens on property owners who haven't followed the law. And we're 100% in favor of this. When you do a good job, we're here to say you do a good job. But when you support the racist Academy Awards, no way.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The next speaker is Susan Bjorkes. Susan Bjorkes on item one I. Good morning, ma'am. Your item's been continued for two weeks.
Why?
That's what I was informed by the council office. Did you, did you wanna still speak on your item? Or have someone speak?
Oh, yes, please. I don't know why I got this letter. They say it's because a van was parked in my parking area, which is my area, and now you're charging me money? I don't understand why. And then you put a lien in my house. Why? What have I done?
Do you wanna speak to a staff member on the ropes, and they can explain to you?
How about the Charles, whatever his name is?
Mr. Charles is here, in the back. He can speak to you as well.
Okay. I'd rather speak to him.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
He's right here. But this item has also been continued for two weeks. That concludes cards on item one. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll.
Madam President, there's also a request to continue one A.C. for 30 days to February 26.
Without objection. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item passes. Let's reset as a regular meeting and begin our special meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield Bonin, Buscainos, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Herstassen, Weezer, Corretts, Kukorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. 12 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First item.
Items seven through nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. Those items are before us. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards on those items?
Yes, sir. Cards on all three items, seven, eight, and nine.
Members, any specials? Mr. Sadio?
Yes, indeed. Item eight.
Item eight, great. Thank you, sir. No remaining items, so let's open the roll. I'm sorry. All right. So let's, we're doing eight, Mr. Sadio. Item eight.
I'm just too excited. What else can I say? As 50,000 fans like to say during the summer nights, those great summer nights sitting up on Chavez Ravine, "Let's go Dodgers." Let's hear it. "Let's go Dodgers." "Let's go Dodgers." "Let's go Dodgers." Thank you, staff. "Let's go Dodgers." I'm just too much of a fan to do this straight. But let me say, colleagues, that this is a really special day for the city of Los Angeles. I cannot tell you how proud I am to be part of this process, a very historic process, a historic time for us. This morning, we're here to welcome wounded warriors, and we are here to welcome our home team, the great Los Angeles Dodgers, to our city chambers. Let's hear it for the great Dodgers. Now, I've got some notes here, so I'm gonna call your name, and I want you guys to stand if you're here with us. Ron Say, are you with us? Where's the duck? The duck?
Penguin, the penguin.
The penguin. Oreo, Oro, Oro. Orel Hershizer. Oreo used to have lunch at Larry Nicole's all the time. Remember that? Maury Wills, the Hall of Famer-to-be. Man belongs in the Hall of Fame today. There's the powerful Eric Carros. There he is, baby. And Dodger manager, which is a great honor, Dave Roberts, where are you, brother? And the entire 40-man roster, including Cy Young, award winner, the most incredible Clayton Kershaw, and his lovely wife. Stand up, brother. So the name Vincent Edward Scully, or as we all like to refer to him, Vin Scully, is the voice and the symbol of baseball, not just for the Dodgers, but for the entire nation. He's a Hall of Famer. He's involved in the National Association of Broadcasters Hall of Fame, American Sportscasters Hall of Fame, the Sports Broadcasting Hall of Fame. He's a Hall of Famer. What else can I say? He has the ability to help you, and I'm off notes now. But I was sharing this with my colleague. I remember growing up in the city. We couldn't always afford to go to the games. But we had a little radio, as all young boys and girls did during that time period. And while you may not have been able to afford the game, you could turn on the radio. And with that, you could see the Dodgers. Each and every pitch, each and every play, every background of who the players were, just amazing storytelling that is unparalleled. I wanna quote what one reporter said about this great man, this great storyteller. "No contest, hands down, greatest announcer in any sport of all time." That's the greatness that's with us this morning. For over 60 years, he's been the voice of baseball and the Dodgers, both in Brooklyn and here in Los Angeles. He is truly a national treasure. He's an icon for the city. And I have to tell you that we cannot thank him enough. We cannot thank him enough for the joy that he's brought. Baseball is the American pastime, and Vin Scully is the voice of that American pastime. He has brought each, as I say, each pitch, each play, each out, the downs, the lows, and the highs. Those difficult moments, the shot heard around the world to Kirk Gibson coming out of the dugout. Sandy Koufax, the image of perfection. All the highs and lows that we have had and experienced as a city, he has brought them to us. And so it's so appropriate and so fitting that this corridor, this street that leads all of us to Dodger Stadium, would be named after Vin Scully. And so I am honored and I am privileged to bring this motion forward. We know we have one last season with him. And we're all gonna listen to every single moment that he's on the air. One last season. And so it's so, so fitting to name Elysian Park Avenue to Vin Scully Avenue. Now, we're gonna say, hey, go up Sunset and make a right on Scully Avenue. Right? That's gonna be the new direction to get to Dodger Stadium. We're honored to have with us Dodger manager Dave Roberts. And we'd like you to stand and take the podium and say a few words with us, if you will.
Madam President, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, and Councilman Sadio, it's hard to follow that sentiment towards Vin Scully, who's an icon in sports and baseball, and what influence and impact he's had on fans, players, coaches. And he just has that way to paint a picture, to connect the fans who are listening at home to the players and to the ballpark. And Dodger Stadium, the Dodgers, are a huge part of this culture. And for, on behalf of the players and the organization, for us to be here in your presence, we're deeply honored. And as Vin has called many great monumental moments in baseball history, to allow us to be a part of another moment, this great day in history as well, with Vin Scully Avenue, for us to be here is special, and it's quite an honor, as I speak, for the players and the former Dodger legends here. We're a part of this Dodgers Love L.A. caravan and tour. And as we conclude at City Hall, it's only fitting that we conclude our week here. And we're gonna do a Fan Fest this weekend. Actually, it's tomorrow at 9:30. So we give fans an opportunity to sign autographs and meet players and be a little bit more intimate. But we've got a great team this year, as we've had the last few years. And our goal is to field a club that you're all very proud to support. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sadio, we have a couple of members on the queue. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Sadio. Bravo. This is a few decades overdue, I'd say. And I'm so glad that Mr. Scully has finally consented to our doing this. He's a man of great humility who has resisted this kind of recognition, but it's so important that we do so. If you know, there's never been a sports announcer like Vin Scully. If you don't know the first thing about baseball, you can listen to Vin Scully call a game and enjoy the experience because of the way he paints the verbal pictures that he does. If you have played baseball your entire life, if you have coached baseball, if you are an expert in baseball, I can guarantee you'll learn something more about some nuance every single time you listen to Vin Scully call a game. He'll bring an angle to it that you haven't considered before. There's nobody who has been as brilliant as a broadcaster as Vin Scully, and nobody who's been such a constant in the history of our city. There's a speech in Field of Dreams that James Earl Jones gives when he's talking about the baseball field and the cornfields. And he says, "Through it all, through all these years, there was baseball. The one constant in all of these years has been baseball. America has been erased and rebuilt 1,000 times, but the one thing that's been constant has been baseball." And that's especially true in our city, where our one constant, through all the ups and downs, through all the positive and negative, as this city has changed, the one constant has been the Los Angeles Dodgers. It is the one thing that has kept us together as a city, even in the most difficult of times. And the personification of that experience, more than anyone else, has been Vin Scully, who, as Mr. Sadio said, all of us who grew up here, all of us who were born here, remember that experience with our families, sitting around, listening to a scratchy voice on a transistor radio in the backyard over a barbecue. And that voice is still with us today. So when I hear Vin Scully, I not only hear a Dodger game, I hear my late father. You know, I hear my brothers and sisters when I was growing up. And it allows me to experience a little bit of that feeling of Los Angeles being what it once was, what it still can be. So for all of you, thank you for bringing us so much joy. All of you Dodgers, thank you for bringing us that sense of pride in our city. Thank you for bringing us, hopefully, another World Series championship this year as well. Thank you all very much. And, Mr. Sadio, thank you for bringing this before us.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanna thank you, Gilbert, for bringing this forward. I'm somewhat awestruck seeing some of the best baseball players, not only in Dodger history, but in baseball history here with us today, and some of the great players in the future. In my district, we have a little bit of history because my predecessor from a few decades ago and my good friend Roz Wyman had the crazy idea when she was elected at age 22 to suggest that we bring the Dodgers to the city of Los Angeles. Amazingly enough, she was successful. And probably the most important thing we brought with us was Vin Scully. And I literally remember Vin Scully as my earliest memory, going to a Dodger game when I was three years old and listening to him on the transistor radio. And that's one thing, people would listen at home, and they'd have a sense of everything that was happening. But they would also bring their transistor radios to the game. Because even though they were watching the game, they got a lot more out of it from Vin Scully than they got actually seeing the game itself, which is quite amazing. I think it's all been well said, the impact that Vinny has had on us all. My entire life has had Vin Scully as a backdrop. And as far as I'm concerned, naming the street is great. I'd be okay if we named the whole damn city after him. So from now on, I'm gonna call us the City Council of the city of Vin Scully. And thank you all for being here. And I don't think Vinny is here today, but he's at least here on my desk. And we all love him, and he's here in spirit. And we're so sorry that this is his last year, but we will treasure it throughout the year and forever. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Sadio, for doing this. And what an amazing show of support for the legendary Vin Scully. And I'm a little sad my cousin's not here, Hyunjin Rue. And I really wanna thank, well, we're not really cousins, but yes, we're all related. And I really wanna thank Vince for pronouncing my name right. But I also wanna thank the Dodgers organization for being a trailblazer on and off the field. I mean, not just with Mr. Roberts, but Dodgers are known for being the glass barrier breaker. And I just really thank the organization and Dodgers as the true spirit of what Los Angeles is. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. And we have three cards. Mr. Previn on item eight, followed by Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Spinner.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President Martinez. I'll just take one minute on this one. And it's very exciting. Once again, I'm a huge Dodger fan. But I'm anxious about the television blackout. And I know that you guys are making a motion to name the street after Vin Scully, which is a great idea. But you may not know it's his last year. And if you could make a motion to somehow put a lien on the Dodger operation until such time as they open it so that the 60% of Los Angeles households that are unable to afford pay TV and access these great guys doing what they do best, in the best year ever, Vin Scully's last year, man, if you could, you know, Herb Weston is a powerful man. If he could do that, if he could make that happen, one way or the other, there are a lot of rich billionaires involved. I don't know how to do it. But if they all chip in a little bit and just open it for Vince's last year, well, I think that the fans of Los Angeles would speak loudly in favor of that. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
Of course, we support the change, the name change to Vin Scully. I hope he's here. I have something in common with him. We both went to, graduated from the same university, Fordham.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Spindler?
The right name, Jackie Robinson Way. That's what you should call that street. I don't know why it's not named after the most important person in baseball, let alone the Dodgers. He's not retired yet, Vin Scully. When Chick Hearn retired, he had to pass away before he had Chick Hearn court. So what's the rush? And we've looked at the situation, the cost of the tickets, the cost of the beer, taking the games off a television. There's a lot of us hurt. A lot of us that wear the Dodger blue are really hurt. And we've been harmed and hurt for a long time. So I don't think naming this street after this announcer at this time is the proper way to go. Because I think you have to bridge that gap between the fan, the low-income fan, and the city. And we're not there yet. And we're not getting there yet. And that's the problem with this, is you have the Oscars. The Oscars right now got a problem. And now, you have a chance to name the street after the most important baseball player in Los Angeles history. The greatest, the most important man, a man who risked his life to play the game he loved, and who was a wonderful, sensational player in the Negro leagues. He was a superstar in himself in two different leagues. And you're not gonna name the street after him first? Well, that just goes to show you, and all of the protesters, Jada Pinkett Smith, and everybody's right. This city does not like people of color. And that's the damn truth.
That concludes cards on item eight. Mr. Sadio to close?
Members and colleagues, thank you for speaking up on this matter. I'm just very proud that we could honor a man who has brought this city together. And Mr. Kukorian, I think you said it best. You're so eloquent about how we all grew up with that transistor radio, in the garage, in the backyard, on the food truck, in the kitchens of this city, in the yards of this city, everywhere where men and women want to take a moment to enjoy this great team of ours. What an honor it is for me, simply to be the council member of this area. I wanna say, as my brother likes to say, "Man, that guy can talk a lick." And this is for him. I even got a message, this is not just for Los Angeles, but it's for the country. I got messages from back east. And I woke up this morning with messages from back east saying that this was such a great thing, that it was long overdue, that now is the time for us to recognize the greatness of this man, a voice that brings unity to our community, none other than Vin Scully. Members, colleagues, I ask for an eye vote on this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Item passes. Congratulations.
All right.
Great job, Mr. Sadio.
We have it. They have mockups of it.
They have mockups.
Okay, members, we gotta move on to item seven. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item seven.
Item seven, call special for cards.
Mr. Previn, item seven, followed by Mr. Walsh and Mr. Spindler. Mr. Previn, are you still here? Sergeants, can you remove the robe for Mr. Previn so he can come up to the podium, please? Sorry about that, Mr. Previn. Item eight, sir? I'm sorry, item seven.
Is it seven or eight, ma'am? Just to be, she said it both ways. Okay, fair enough. I just give, can I give the Dodgers a moment to exit? Because I don't wanna step on their moment.
Sir, they're exiting. You can go ahead.
Well, they're still shuffling around. It's very noisy in here. Do you want me to go? I mean, if you just, is the idea that nobody's listening?
Please continue. I'm listening, Mr. Previn.
Oh, that's very sweet. Thank you, Supervisor, next Supervisor-to-be, Martinez. It is Eric Previn on item number seven. And, well, Corretts is, oh, there he is. Okay. So this is in Corretts's district. And what we have here is one of many. And this is one of the few that's actually made it onto an agenda because you are pushing them up into the committees. But these are called preferential parking districts. And what it is, of course, is a preferential parking opportunity for the residents to hold off the vermin. And in this case, the vermin are the students who go to Notre Dame High School, who are parking in and around the area. Now, we have lots of solutions for parking in and out of the area, but I'm gonna stay on this item and not talk about Harvard-Westlake now. But what is the solution here? Is to roll out one more little street to shut it down. But as everybody knows, and this is a sobering and unfortunate comment, we have had some problems in that area, one that makes me almost well up in tears. So to have a bunch of kids walking in from further away, you know, I'm not 100% sure that it's a good area. I think that Corretts is studying these things very, very carefully by responding to these neighborhood groups. But I don't see this as a feasible solution. I mean, I don't know what we're doing. Because all that happens when you put up the signs that say, "No parking anytime", is that people don't park there. They park somewhere else. Or they park there and they get a ticket. So we should take a very close look at Xerox Solutions revenue subsequent to all of these, Mr. Bonin, amazing preferential parking districts that are like licenses to write tickets. And I know that Los Angeles has some financial difficulties. I know that the stock market is not great. I know we have billionaires who are being hammered, left, right, and center, by guys like me saying, "Give away the Dodgers." But we got to do something other than put up more and more traps for ordinary kids who are parking at high school. You know how much time it takes for a high school kid to make the 75 bucks that Xerox sends you? And by the way, if you don't respond immediately because you're a kid who doesn't have that much money, they give you another 100 right on top to say, "Thank you very much." It's not appropriate, and they're good at it with the electronics. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Walsh on item seven.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Item seven, this concerns Notre Dame Academy. Four blocks around it, it says right here, "No permanent solution has been found to the parking problems." And point of order, there are only six people here. There's no quorum here. Where's Vin Scully?
Next speaker is Mr. Spindler on item seven.
Why do we need a solution? It's a fucking school. It's not a hospital. It's not a fire station. So why do you have to have motorists violating posted restrictions and be cited? You don't take enough money away from people? Tired of this crap? The streets belong to the people. They do not belong to Notre Dame High School. They don't belong to the Dodgers. They belong to the people. And the people should vote on this stuff. Not you and your influence and your pandering and your campaign donation-led asshole maneuvers like this. The people own the streets. The Ninth Circuit has said that. The Supreme Court has said that. But you guys don't follow the law. So you're gonna keep taking away streets and quasi-privatizing them. And that's another thing that the Nury Grand Jury needs to look at to stop this kind of fucking criminality.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. That concludes cards on item seven. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, item passes. Let's move on to item nine.
Item nine, call special for cards.
Mr. Previn, item nine, followed by Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Spindler. Mr. Previn, you have one minute left.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn. And today, we're naming the media hall upstairs after Rick Orlov, who is a longtime reporter for the Daily News, who I had the unique opportunity to have my, I think that was his last interview, before he passed away last year, which was very touching and weird, obviously. But he is a guy who is kind of an institution down here because for decades, I think, like Vin Scully, he called the shots down here. And, you know, I'm sure that when Council Rule 93 came before him, he wrote about it, maybe. You know, when the council was the kind of council where there was debate in the chambers and you'd have different, you know, opinions that were thrown around, as opposed to the current council, which, of course, I think he would be very sad about. Because we don't have any of that dialogue. We just have presentations, which I think everybody likes. Don't get me wrong, the presentations are fantastic. It's just that the public is, I mean, look at the television set. You don't even see who's speaking. It's a weirdness that he would not have tolerated. And I think that going forward, maybe we could name the telecast after Rick and change it so that the public's included.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Walsh? Item nine, sir?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This renames the Los Angeles City Council Memorial Media Center, whatever the hell that is, to honor the memory of Rick Orlov. Well, we're 100% in favor of this, principally because I never speak ill of the dead.
Mr. Spindler on item nine?
Yes, the late great Rick Orlov. The single man who spent all of his time here, all the time here, helping to cover you up, all of your crap. He covered it all up. Now, he used to write these stories in the Daily News, but he just got really, really old and tired at the end. So people would walk up to him, give him information, and say, "Hey, I got a story about this. I got a story about that." It got filed in File 13. And the Daily News let this guy be their chief reporter for City Hall and completely got blindsided because they didn't know what was going on in City Hall. That's the problem with the journalists. He's a nice old man, and he was here all the time, but he just stopped reporting the news and he became one of these little gallery queens to go around and glorify you people. And because he didn't wanna be politically incorrect and impolite, but later on, as everybody realizes what you've got now, you can't even live in this city without being whacked over the head with a shovel with all of these fucking fees and costs and expenses. If they would've done their job at the Daily News and the LA Times, I wouldn't be standing here right now doing this. I would be standing here, driving on the freeway, getting off on Jackie Robinson Boulevard to watch the games. But we're not gonna have a city like that. And Orlov was the main reason why. You got another one, Zahnheiser, who's taken his place because now we've got the next old white guy that walks around like a fucking mummy with his little notepad, walking around. Try to give him a story. Try to give him a story, and he won't even fucking look at you. That's your journalist. We don't have journalists here in LA.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. That concludes cards on item nine. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, item passes and Mr., Madam Clerk, I should say. Let's send items eight and nine forthwith. Okay, let's adjourn the special meeting and return to our regular meeting. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
That takes counsel to general public comment.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Madam President, if we could reconsider item number 1I. We've previously continued it for two weeks, but we need 30 days for that. If we could continue it for 30 days, reconsider it and continue it for 30 days, please.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Without objection, that will be the order on the continuation for 1I for 30 days. Okay, now, we're gonna move on to general public comment. Mr. Previn?
Thank you, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn from the 2nd District. And I hesitate to bother the council with a trifle like a matter that exists in the neighborhood council space. But since Commander Wesson and Budget Finance Chair Kukorian have taken a leading role in supporting the neighborhood councils, which get about 50 grand per neighborhood council every year, I wanna raise the following issue about the current neighborhood council election. On our Studio City Neighborhood Council website, which I encourage you to go to at studiocityneighborhoodcouncil.org, if you Google it, it will come up, there is a robust list of incumbent accomplishments seated on the website, right next to the "Vote Here" button. So this is obviously a flagrant violation, Bonin. And I know you have been fairly educated in some of these matters. I would ask somebody who has a spine in the universe to step forward and encourage the city attorney, who is part of the inside, the little accomplishment thing, is a city attorney, picture of Mike Fuer, giving the award to this very same group. We need to take it down in the interest of fair and open elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Walsh, followed by Michael Carrion and Wayne Spindler.
John Walsh, let's get something straight. There's not a single member of the city council or the mayor that supports the boycott of the Oscars. I'm not struggling with any facts, Mr. Kukorian. As far as it is going to cost the city well over $1 million in donated city services for the Oscar cast. And they're gonna get back $300,000. So I was wrong. The subsidy for the, that the city is giving the Oscar cast is more on the amount of about 3/4 of a million dollars. Racists, racists, racists. Now, stop! And now, I'm gonna give you the last five seconds to say that you are in support of the Oscar boycott.
Next speaker, Mr. Michael Carrion?
Yeah, once again, I'd like to ask, I don't know who I would ask, city attorney or somebody can guide me in the right direction. How do we go about finding out how much the city of Los Angeles has paid for Mr. Weezer's improprieties? For Mr. Weezer's sexual conduct, sexual harassment, I don't know if it was drunk driving, an accident that he had, it wasn't his fault, but yet the city paid thousands, if not tens of thousands, of dollars out for his actions? Who do I ask about this? Because he's not doing his job. His girl that's standing there said that the construction had already started on the Soto Bridge. It hasn't. Now, they're lying to the public. So I don't know. I just need to know where I go to find out so that we can find out how much money we're paying for Mr. Weezer's girlfriends and his drinking and driving, and what other issues have gone on so that the public can be more aware of what's going on in Mr. Weezer's sex life.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Spindler?
Boycott the Olympics. Boycott the Olympics here. Now you start by boycotting the Oscars. Racist Oscars. Now you've got the Dodgers, they can't even name the street after Jackie Robinson. Further racism. But more importantly, alls you have to do is look at these chairs. The chairs automatically vote yes. None of these fuckers ever vote on anything. The chairs are automatically voting yes. Every time the roll is called by the clerk, the chairs automatically vote yes. How the hell do you run a government like this? Is that legal? I was at the MTA board yesterday and Mayor Nazarian, he called the roll on all the questions. How come you don't call the roll? You're calling nothing. You're letting the chairs automatically vote yes unanimously on every item. Now that should be part of the Nury Grand Jury of 2016. FBI, stop this fucking bullshit.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. And that concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Mr. Weezer, do you have an announcement?
No, adjournment motion.
Okay. Any announcements? I have one quick announcement. Earlier this year, we supported an initiative to increase diversity at the LA Fire Department and as part of that effort, the Fire Department is sponsoring a career expo tomorrow in my district at Drill Tower 81. The expo will highlight all aspects of the Fire Department from helicopters to EMS demonstrations and you'll be able to try on the equipment, learn about the test requirements, and find out anything you want to know about the Los Angeles Fire Department. Please join me and Chief Taraza tomorrow from 12 to 4 at the Drill Tower 81, which is located at 14355, our middle street. And the expo will be held tomorrow between 12 and 4. Personally, I really want to encourage women to join us tomorrow and find out more about joining the Fire Department. Thank you. Any adjournment motions, members? Please rise. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. It's with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Louis Moreno, a member of the city family who passed away about a week and a half ago. Many of you know, remember Louis from the garage as we drove in, we drive in each and every day here at City Hall. And many people in the Bull Heights area and the east side of Los Angeles remember Louis as a great friend and advocate for youth, a selfless volunteer, and just an extraordinary human being. He was born on February 5th, 1961. He was raised in Bull Heights and attended St. Isabel School and was a proud rough rider, graduating from Roosevelt High School in 1980. He attended East Los Angeles College and remained a faithful alumnus to each of his alma maters. Louis was raised in a single-parent household and learned the value of hard work from his mother Lily, who greatly influenced his life. He was a recognized figure around here when he worked at the City of Los Angeles Parking Services from 1985 to 2012. He always greeted guests with a friendly demeanor and a warm smile. If I said only one thing about Louis, it is that he was 100% about the community. He was an emcee at countless community events, including sporting events, academic awards, and my annual fireworks shows, among a host of others. Although he was from Bull Heights, he was widely known throughout all our east side communities, including Elserino and East LA. Louis also combined his passion for sports and serving others through his work as a sports commentator. He started covering high school sports with his friend Rico Cabrera on the East Los Angeles scene on the cable show. And then he ventured on his own in the mid-'90s with East LA Sports Wrap-Up. Through his sports show, Louis covered sporting events, but more importantly, ran stories that highlighted the youth and the positive things happening in each of the schools and in our community. And he did this at a time in the '90s, especially when a lot of the negative stories were coming out from the east side about our young people joining gangs. He always wanted to show the positive side of what our young people were doing. Each year, he would do a live remote from the East LA Classic, the battle on the gridiron between Roosevelt and Garfield High Schools, one of the longest and largest football rivalries west of the Mississippi. It's a big deal to Bull Heights and East LA, and Louis treated it like it was the east side's Super Bowl, which was great for our communities and especially our kids. Beyond Roosevelt and Garfield, some of the other schools and organizations he highlighted through his show and supported over the years include the Bull Heights Wolf Pack, the Elserino Stallions, East LA Bobcats, and Cilejian, and Wilson High School. In fact, during my time at Cilejian, Louis was one of my baseball coaches. I'm proud to say we've been friends ever since. He was also a volunteer and a big supporter of our Los Angeles Police Department and in particular, Hollenbach Division. He was a member of the National Latino Police Officers Association. He helped organize events like the annual toy giveaway, fundraisers, and events that benefited our police department and our police officers. More than anything, Louis loved his community. Louis' goal was that he would become the honorary mayor of Bull Heights. I think many of us always saw him that way anyway. No title was necessary. He was truly a community ambassador and by far one of the most faithful servants Bull Heights and the east side has ever seen. He was a loving son, father, nephew, and friend who taught us all, taught us all that no matter how rough things get, life is beautiful. Even as Louis' health declined, his spirits remained positive. On the day before his passing, he posted on Facebook and reminded us to smile. Services for Louis will take place at 11:00 AM on Saturday, February 6 at St. Mary's Church in Bull Heights. Our deepest condolences to his daughter Teresa, his aunt Elizabeth, Sylvia, and his cousins and countless friends and youth whose life he touched. He will be greatly missed. Rest in peace, Louis, Mr. Bull Heights, our mayor in Bull Heights. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Buscano?
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry to hear about Jose. Thought some prayers are with his family. Colleagues, this is a tough one for me. My cousin Nancy passed away, Nancy LaGrande Semoyoa, after a battle of cancer. Kind, loving, positive, passionate, optimistic, hopeful, and brave, taken away from us on January 19th at a young age of 34. I was at her funeral this Wednesday, so I missed counsel on this last Wednesday. Native San Pedrin, attended San Pedro High School, went on to cosmetology school and opened her own hair salon in San Pedro, there where she expressed her artistic ability in making everyone feel beautiful. Survived by her loving husband Hector of 10 years, her two young children, Carlo and Santino, her parents Joe and Anna Maria, sisters Rosie and Christina, and also not to mention, of course, a number of aunts, uncles, cousins, family members, and close friends. Funeral mass was held this last Wednesday at Mary's Star. Cousin Nancy, we're going to miss you. We love you. May you rest in peace. And lastly, I ask that we adjourn in memory of John Henry McGinnis, passed away at the age of 64 on January 16th, born in Torrance and raised in San Pedro, lived in San Fernando Valley for many years before returning home to San Pedro later in life. He worked for American Airlines for over 30 years and was a veteran of the US Army, was an integral in the revitalization of his local neighborhood, Leland Park area in San Pedro, preceded in death by his son Jonathan, survived by his brilliant daughter, Crystal Rose McGinnis, his best friend and love of his life, Susan McGinnis, his mother, Rosie Jackson, brother David, and his sister Priscilla Harper. Crystal's planning a celebration of life in his honor to be announced soon. May John Henry McGinnis rest in peace. Thank you, colleagues.
Any other adjournment motions? I have one. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Priscilla Torres. Mrs. Torres lost her life against cancer on Thursday, January 14th of this year. She was 83 years old at the time of her death. Priscilla was born in Van Nuys on August 30th, 1933. Priscilla was a resident of Van Nuys for 30 years when she then moved to Arlita, where she raised her four children. Priscilla learned about the importance of community engagement at a very young age when her mother began voicing concerns to city leaders. Since then, she dedicated her life to community service. With the help of then-councilmember Wilkinson and Priscilla's perseverance, a new traffic signal was installed on the corner of Kester and Delano in Van Nuys. She also served as a delegate for the Democratic Party during President Carter's tenure. Priscilla worked as an outreach worker for councilmember Bernardi. In addition to her work in the community, she also owned her own business, the Mexican restaurant Jenny's Cocina in Van Nuys. Priscilla was a program director for Hermana Mexicana Nacional in North Hollywood. She was very active in the community and received countless recognitions from the state and city leaders for her efforts in improving the community. Priscilla was laid to rest on January 26th and she will be sorely missed. She survived by her husband Manuel, her three daughters Sonia Hernandez, Roxanne Factor, Elizabeth Hernandez Cutler, her sister Eleanor Baca, Betty Duran, eight grandchildren and 25 great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace. Mr. Weezer?
Yeah, Madam President, I just, if you could indulge me, I'd like to make an announcement as well. This Saturday, we have Night on Broadway on Broadway Avenue where we shut down from Olympic to Second Street. Last year, we planned this event, first time we did it, to celebrate seven years of our Bringing Back Broadway initiative. And we opened up seven historic theaters free to the public with free performances. We expected about 5,000 people, over 35,000 people showed up. I think there's a strong interest in Angelenos rediscovering our past and seeing these beautiful historic theaters being put back to use. And this year, we have, again, seven historic theaters open with free performances, great performances that everything from vaudeville to 1940s tap dance. And we opened up the eighth stage to celebrate the eighth year of Bringing Back Broadway. It's an outdoor stage where Elo Black, who was here supporting our arts programs not too long ago, as well as LA-based Ozil Motley will be playing on the outdoor stages. So we welcome all. It's going to be a great night, Saturday night, rain or shine. Thank you.
Paul. Duet.
Buscano and Paul Corretza are going to be at the Orpheum doing a duet. Must see.
Just kidding. It's really not happening. It's not happening, honestly.
I wouldn't put it past you, Mr. Buscano.
We are looking for a ninth event on our ninth anniversary next year. You could practice this year and get ready. See if you qualify.
You and I.
Well, members, I see no more announcements or adjournments, so that concludes our meeting. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great weekend.